This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for April 9th, 2024 at 6:02 PM. We do have a quorum tonight. Joy will be late and Dan is absent this evening, but we can get going. So let's please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm calling again to reply to the United States President America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, without any divisions, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so at about 6:30, the Finance Committee will hopefully, some of them will be joining us, but we'll work on regular business until we get to that point. Do we have anybody here for Citizen Speak, formerly known as Open Time for the Public? All right. I see none at the moment. So let me find the right agenda here. Hang on a second, people. Oopsie. All right. So how about any reports? Scott, do you have anything you want to share with us first in terms of following our agenda here?
Just a few things. One of the things is the Select Board policies and how we kind of distribute all the documents. So this week was a little bit of a transition, so I did send out the invitation to have the shared folder. It was just more of a test to see if it actually worked.
Right.
So John, thanks for getting back to me. I didn't, I wasn't expecting it to actually work. But the idea is to move all of our files to have them accessible by all the Select Board members, also kind of organizing all the archives, because we have a significant amount of files in our drive. I get actually error messages that we have exceeded the file amount in our thing every five or 10 minutes. So it's a matter of just going into the archives, sorting them out, and then kind of starting fresh with a lot of the newer things like, you know, do we really need to reference the FY 2009 budget at this point? If we need it, we can always just go in the archives and dig it out. So but whether it's like emailing the packets, or, you know, I would like to do one single packet for everybody, as I mentioned, or if there's a, it's better to put everything into the folder, the shared folder, and just update it as that goes. So there's a lot of different options that we can kind of customize. So if you prefer paper, we can always print it out for you. If you prefer electronic, we can do it that way, too.
So this would take the place of Dropbox?
Yeah.
Okay. I think most of us, I'll speak for myself, all of us, the three of us, okay, none of us have been terrible fans about Dropbox. Use it periodically, but it's not very intuitive to find things. And maybe it's because there's so much in there that, you know, needs to be archived. So I think we're, I'd say we might be fine with that. I don't know. Personally, I'm just used to getting email attachments, but I'm willing to try this new shared folder.
Yeah, I'm okay with the new process. I guess I would want a paper copy of the agenda, right? That would, because I only have one screen and I don't want to have to bring my second one. So I can follow the agenda on paper and then pull up the attachments as we go along.
That would be helpful.
What my brother says.
Okay.
Exactly. I just wanted a paper agenda so I can track. Thank you for the invite. Microsoft is Microsoft, but I have all the documents. I would prefer not to have paper other than the agenda.
Yeah. If there's something that, you know, depending on, I can't imagine what, but if there's something that people felt like they really wanted it so they could, you know, scratch it up themselves, we can always just print out a copy, but rather than doing multiple copies and multiple versions, I think that's fine.
accommodate everyone, but for me.
Yeah. And I think the only, the only thing I would just want to be sure of, and I'm sure you can manage this, Scott, is just that as we put something in a shared folder, that we just manage, we set up some parameters for version control.
Yeah.
So that we're all, you know, if there's edits that are done, we're all very clear as to what the last version is that we're looking at. So that would be my only comment, I think, about that. Okay.
So we, most of the other things revolve around the budget and the warrant, but we did start negotiations with the Highway Union, so we just had a first meet and greet, just to meet each other and meet the negotiation team to do some basic ground rules. So we really won't be getting into any real bargaining until after town meeting. And then, just a reminder, the Public Safety Building Forum is tomorrow, so can't say it enough.
It is, yeah. Okay. Any reports from Select Board? Any important meetings that anybody's had since we met last time? It's only been a few days, it feels like. I think it has only been a few days since April.
No, I mean, capital met, all those items are going to come up later on tonight.
Okay.
When we talk about the warrant. And Local School Committee will meet tomorrow night. Finance, we've been meeting jointly. And PPP is delaying their meeting this month by one week to accommodate for school vacation. So we won't meet till, I think, it's the 25th.
Yep. And school vacation again is the 15th?
Next week.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Stephen, anything?
I have nothing from assessors, Board of Health, Open Space Committee, which conflicted out with our prior meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Planning board canceled.
Okay.
I sat in on ConCon, but I'm not going to step on Dan's territory.
Okay.
The only good news is that there's a modicum of progress on the Manhan River Bridge for the Trail, Manhan Meadows.
Great. Yeah, I know that's been in the works for a while.
There's still a prayer that we can get it purchased and installed this year.
Good. Okay, very good. Okay. All right. And on my end, just briefly, on the Ad-Hoc Grant Committee, our little team has been meeting. We've got two things that are kind of underway. One is due this, later this week. It's for the historical commission to look at doing some historical preservation on the Old Town Hall, which is eventually the next step. We had done the windows replacement and some of the rotten woodwork on the Old Town Hall Police Station last year. The next step is actually to do, there's some of the repointing of the brickwork, and this is necessary to preserve the envelope of the old building so that the whole thing doesn't fall down. And if there were some future use of this building, we need to keep the outside functioning. So there is a grant availability. It's not a lot. I think it's between $15,000 and $100,000, but it's very rare that we find something for historical. So we're working on putting that together. And then also an expression of interest for the one-stop-grant program, and this will be looking for the possibility of doing a sewer feasibility study from, well, along the rail trail. So essentially trying to connect in with, with East Hampton and looking at that. So that one is not due until the end of the month, but Kate has already made some, some good strides on, on working on that one. So that's pretty much it, I think, for the grant program at the moment. There's a couple of things that have come across my desk, but there, there's one that came across today from one of the firefighters' grants, but the deadline is Friday. So I talked to Rich and he said, no, no, that's quite all right. We're not going to apply for that one. So that was a little too late. We did reach out, I did reach out to respond to a request from the Senator Warren and Senator Markey's office, like we had done last year. They had asked for ideas for the congressionally directed spending amount. Sometimes they have availability of funds that they can push forward and have for their identified projects. So they put out a request to everybody in the state, basically. And so we had done one last year, and basically they said, just reiterate the same one. And that was for the, the design work for the feasibility, sorry, for the public safety complex. So we put in a request, but chances are probably not, not strong, but we at least put our name in there. So that's about it. Okay, we have a cost efficiencies meeting coming up this week and a grant meeting coming up this week as well. So if people aren't following, if you go onto the town website, the calendar function is quite visible, and you can, you don't have to go into MyTownGov, because every time we schedule a meeting in MyTownGov, it shows up automatically on the calendar page of the town website. So that's all very helpful. Okay, I think that's it for those kinds of things. Let's get into some new business. And we have Lucy, I think, Town Clerk. Yeah. And let me just say one thing here. This is, we know what you're coming up for, on the, the request of the early person voting. And just to say, last meeting, we started to get into that discussion, but that was not officially on the agenda. So I hold myself, or hold myself accountable for having allowed that discussion to begin. So now it's actually an agenda item. So you make them up and explain what you're talking about, please.
Lucy, Town Clerk. Last time I was here, I presented a letter to you all from the Board of Registars.
Don't think we got a letter.
Well, I have the letter for you to sign, but we were going to table it. Talking with the Board of Registars, we had our meeting, and I had given it some thought. And I'm going to present at our next meeting next week, maybe to table it again, because we don't know when we're going to have a election, a special election, if we're going to have a special election. So I'm asking for us to add it again to another agenda, for you all to add it to another agenda.
I want to just say a couple of words about why you were thinking about opting out.
We were thinking about opting out because we didn't have a good turnout on early in-person voting at all. We had about 15 people in total come out for early in-person voting. We have over 1,000 mail-in ballots that we have to send out. So we had just discussed just having it just for the local election, opting out of it, having it for the, you know, primaries and the election in November. But I had thought about it over the weekend, and I'm going to bring it up at our next Board of Registars meeting. So.
We can, we can hold off on any further discussion. Just a question then. The way I'm understanding this, so this would happen basically during normal business hours, right?
Yeah, that's right.
You said two weeks it has to be open, so somebody's in Town Hall anyway.
Right. And that's why I thought about it. Yeah.
So you have to open up, you said, one weekend or two weekends?
Um, just one weekend. Well, when it's the primaries, it's, it's either two weekends or both Saturday and Sunday of one weekend.
Okay.
So.
So two days of a weekend?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's not like you've got to call in a bunch of people to manage the in-person voting?
No.
Okay.
But it does, yeah.
Okay. So you're going to talk to them again and then come back to us when you want to be on the agenda?
Yep.
Anybody object? Okay. All right. Thanks.
That's it. Thank you. Oh, can I just say one thing? Sorry.
Yes, maybe.
It's about the caucus. The caucus is Thursday, April 11th, 7 to 9. It's in this room. We need a quorum of 25 registered voters to attend. And I did put up the procedure today on the Southampton Community Web Facebook page. I have to have it put on the Town Community Facebook page, just how it goes and how everything works. So.
Do you have it on the, on the website, too?
I did not put it on the website yet, but I will do that. So, all right.
Good. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right. Next one. Scott, I think Collins Center update, such as it is?
I'm going to actually speak to that in the budget.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. So we're going to wait on the budget discussion until FinCom actually gets here, obviously. So anything on whichever one, 23 closeout?
Yeah. So we officially do not owe our auditors any more information.
Okay.
I just got it. So.
For the 23 one?
Uh, yes. 22.
22. 22 closeout.
22.
So the 22 audit update. Okay. So the auditors are fine with 22's information? Okay. Okay.
What about 23?
23, then. Where are we with anything from school?
And are we, can we say publicly for the record that all outstanding items related to 23 are exclusively connected with the schools?
I'd have to double-check that with the auditors. I just was able to get to 22, you know, one of those two things.
But I know the main thing that you've been waiting for, Bradley, right, is to, to balance the books with grants and then some of the accounts that are showing that they might be leading toward a deficit, right?
Correct.
Or things may have not been put in the correct category. So, and when we had the Chair of the School Committee here last meeting, I think we made it pretty clear that we wanted this. I really am not comfortable getting much further along in here and getting right to the end of our deadline with DLS that gave us an extension. And if, they said that they were doing it imminently, well, I don't know.
I think right now the target is still May 31st to have the school stuff done. That's why before I go start beating the drum tomorrow night, I want to make sure, it'd be nice if somebody could say on the record, and I guess I'm looking for our town accountant, whether he can or can't, is, is there any outstanding items that he's aware of not related to the schools that you're aware of?
I just want to discuss with Scott certain grant deficits and how we can deal with them. But other than that, it's the school accounts.
And the, the grant conversation you want to have are any of those town grants?
Town grants.
Well, because I, I know there's outstanding school grants.
Yes.
That you're waiting on. But you used, you just used the word grant. I'm just looking for a qualifier. Is it just related to the schools on the grant question that you want to talk to Scott with?
Grant questions, there's deficits that have been carried over for prior years, as in COVID expenses, has 100,000 deficit. I don't want to keep rolling that over.
That's related to the school, though, not?
I would assume that's town, and I don't think that we use any COVID expenses exclusively for a school. So that's town, more town-related than school. School has their own grant accounts that, yes, I want to investigate, but there are other carryover deficits from prior years that I also want.
Would be helpful if, I mean, you may not have it handy, or if you do, just whatever account that is that you're talking about, so we can.
Yeah.
Because if that's the CARES Act stuff, that goes way back, which I, okay. Yeah, that would be good to know. But I think we can say at this point the majority of what we're looking for.
I would agree with that statement, but it's a much bigger sledgehammer.
Oh, I know.
If I can say it's 100% related to the schools.
Correct, yeah.
And we've already, as a, as a town, this town has already spent an additional $76,000. And if our request can't get raised to the top.
Yeah.
Then I would make an argument to withhold the fourth quarter payment.
Yeah, so, okay.
It's the only way we got their attention last time.
Yeah. All right. Well, let's keep seeing, the school committee meeting is tomorrow, you said?
Tomorrow night, local, school tonight.
Local, okay. All right. There you go.
Welcome, Julie.
All right. Okay. Well, let us, let us see where we are, then. We will keep on pursuing that, but I'm hoping our next meeting will be, where are we at? Well, we're probably going to have to meet once in between to sign off on the warrant and all of that kind of stuff. But our next regular meeting is going to be the 23rd. So we definitely need it before then, as far as I'm concerned. Whatever they have to do, and I, I don't know, I would like to know if other towns have somehow closed their books while waiting for the school. I can't imagine they could have, but it doesn't seem like it's only, it should be only us that's complaining about this.
No, but if it's, if it's grant-related, I would say Norris has the majority of the grants, based on its population.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, any further comment about that? All right. Scott, it looks like you're up with the draft warrant article discussion, perhaps? We'll keep on going until around 6:30, when we'll hope for some of the finance folks to show up. So if you want to go ahead and run through that and can make it a little bit bigger, maybe. So I don't know how it shows up on our screen with the action on TV here. Not quite so big. There you go. That's fine. All right. So you want to just kind of, we don't have to read them all, but just kind of the categories of the, the article name, I guess, is what we would need, yeah?
A lot of them, we have, we have to input the numbers.
Right.
Kind of like the final process, once we come up with a budget and decide how we're going to transfer things and, and fill in the blanks. So a lot of it is really just placeholders at this point. But for the first three articles, we have the traditional, knocking with it, we get the free, transferring it from free cash to our three funds, the stabilization, the capital, and then the OPEC trust.
So I, so I would just suggest for how we communicate this to the public, I think Article 4 needs to become Article 1. Because although, without the explanation of why we're paying this back, I think it'll be alarming when we say there's only 100,000 in free cash.
Good point.
So put, okay, so put that first.
First, right. First, we got to repay the loan that we took out last year. Remind everybody we did that, which is why free cash is only X. And these next three transfers are going to be substantially less than historical.
Okay. And so this is the actual amount that we had borrowed, right, last year, the 353.87 that needs to go back to the Operational Stabilization Fund. Okay.
The next one is establishing the Capital Project Stabilization Fund that we talked about briefly last week for the Hampshire Regional High School.
Do you want feedback as we go along?
Yeah, why don't we?
All right. So I'm in support of this as long as we add language to it that puts a cap. And I'm open to what that is, but like, right now, it's open-ended the way this is written. So if it was to be that the cumulative of this stabilization fund cannot exceed 5% of the previous year's budget, okay, but I don't want this to become a place where they're just dumping surplus money that otherwise would come back to the taxpayers. So some sort of cap, and I don't know what the rest of the Board thinks about what that number should be.
Right. At this point, we do need the language. They were not putting in any dollar amount at this point in time, right?
Correct. But if we, but if we vote minus the language, it's open. If we add the language, which we, I asked Tom if we could modify it, and Margaret said yes, you know, whether it's 5%, 10%, 2%, whatever the number is, I think we should put some sort of cap. And we can always go back to the voters and request an adjustment, but I don't want to write a blank check.
So when you say of the previous year's budget, you're referring to which?
Hampshire Regional is previous.
Previous year Hampshire Regional budget.
Right. So this year, they're asking for 5.7 million, and they're already sitting on a surplus of 2.1 million. So I mean, how much more? They're already at close to 40% in reserves. But I understand it because of school choice and the, their excess and deficiency account, I get that. So this would be now a third account, that it would allow that 2.1 to build. And I don't even think we collectively have $800,000 in our reserves. So that's all.
I have a question before we leave this. This is for capital projects in the future, regional.
There you go.
At the school.
And we heard quite a list of very major expenses coming down line. And it's a fund that will accumulate over time until it's drawn upon the authorizer.
Right. So the current, I'll say enabling acts, but that's the wrong word. The current agreement that Southampton entered into to allow our 7th through 12th grade students to attend Hampshire Regional dated 1966, so it's outdated, allows them to pass two budgets, their operating budget and their capital budget. And if the capital budget comes down to us, we, like in the other four communities, have to print it out to the voters, just like a debt exclusion, which is how we operate. And I would say that would work fine for Southampton. I would say the other communities that have a shrinking population can't afford to do that. So this is a way to allow those smaller communities to build up reserves without having to go back to the taxpayers. I would argue it's at our detriment. I understand why they want to do it, and I don't necessarily find fault in it. But considering that Southampton pays 56 cents on the dollar for anything that happens up there, we, we should be able to put a cap in that place, if they want to use it as an alternative method.
So this is really helpful for me. This will expand until it's duly called upon only for capital projects. So it's a purpose distinct from the other funds that you enumerated, other reserves.
Correct. But those other reserves can be used and are meant to be used for capital projects.
Yep. Okay.
Yep.
And so I'm glad you're flexible about what the limit ought to be. I agree, there should be a limit, but in anticipation, if they've got a clearly thought-through capital plan, you put the lid a little low.
Right. But nothing prevents, all right, so if we say, if we say 10%, right, that's another 5 million. So now they'd have 7 and 1/2 million. And I understand the athletic field's coming up and potentially the roof. But say the project comes up to be 8 million, and they need another half thousand, they would just come back to the individual towns and say, you each have to pay your portion of the half million.
Good. It's an important vehicle, happening place, with a limit.
Yep. Finance folks, if you would just have that mic turned on, just right on the top, switch right on the top of the thing, just right, right below your finger there. Yeah, just flip it up so it's on green. There you go. Perfect. Thanks. Okay. And we'll wait until you have somebody else to call your meeting to order?
No, we will, I got.
Yeah, okay.
Feel free to chime in.
All right, good. Okay. So next, capital requests. So they met last night, apparently? Yep.
Yeah, last Thursday.
And do we know what they're looking for, for?
We, we do. I just haven't inputted it yet.
Okay.
So I guess we do need separate articles for each one, instead of one article in several motions, so.
The way we've usually done it, anyway?
Well, yeah, but I just, I was trying to expedite it and, you know, say as long as the town moderator was okay with it, could we do it as one lump sum?
Well, maybe. We can, need to talk to him. But do we have just maybe two articles, though, for, for capital?
I'll have 11. Five or s, at least.
Can't have that much money.
Well, we, I thought I, did I not send you the, maybe I only sent it to Scott.
I mean, it's a long list for capital requests, I'm sure, but I would have thought we might have had maybe money for five or so.
Give me one second.
Maybe hit the most.
Depending on how much we transfer into it from free cash, as you.
But the.
TBD. Okay.
No, hold on. I'll find it.
Okay, that's fine.
Because we, we ranked them, and then we allocated money until we ran out of money.
Exactly. And weren't you also keeping a reserve in there, paced on there?
That assumes money's coming in.
Yeah, their recommendations, though, that we didn't spend all the capital money down. Okay. Well, we know that we've got at least two, and we'll, we'd have to talk to the moderator about combining them, but.
So there were 16 articles to be considered, 16 items to be considered after we backed out the ones that were withdrawn. Of the 16, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 were funded.
Really?
Totalling $120,914 of what we believed was availability of $139,718.
Okay, so many of these must be fairly small requests, then?
ADA doors for 11, 6, 28, assuming we get no grant. Next was lighting at the library, $7,000 to secure their $10,000 grant. And I think that one needs to be worded to release the money immediately, since it has to be spent by May 31st.
Yeah, we need to double-check all that. If that was a match to her current grant, is that the idea, what that one is, maybe? I don't know. Because there's something also for the Green Communities one, so we want to be sure we're not double-counting it.
And then 20, then we passed on the heating system at the highway, 200,000 because of lack of funds. We passed on the 172,000 diesel issue, lack of funds. We passed on the $300,000 street sweeper, which for the record has a 12-year expected life, and we're paying $48,000 a year now. So it's actually costing us more money to outsource it, and we still have to pay for the staff either way. We did approve $20,405 for the Norris resurface of the gym floors, which is the strip all the way down to the original wood, and then rebuild it back up. $5,500 for the library to replace septic pump number two. Septic one already failed and has been replaced. We passed on the $210,000 for the highway roadside mower. I don't know how they're going to cut the grass. We approved the $18,875 for the structural improvements to Norris to prevent the bell tower from collapsing onto the sidewalk. We approved the $12,492 for the library common room, but only, that's a partial funding, only to replace the flooring. We did not approve funding for furniture and paintings, which was in their original ask. We passed on the $104,000 for the highway box truck. We passed on the $138,000 for the Norris replacement of carpets. We passed on the $54,500 for the Norris parking lot. We approved the $24,895 for the highway roof repairs. We approved the $11,671 for the internet upgrade within Town Hall. And then the last one was the $8,448 for the HVAC mini-split, which actually cools all the servers that supply Town Hall.
Okay, that's more than I would have thought we could fit in there.
But I did see in here, it looked like you had a different, somebody had a different funding source for the internet.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that. The, the amount for the, the Wi-Fi for Town Hall is going to be close to 14 to 15,000. So I wasn't sure who submitted the capital to.
Might have been Ed. I don't know.
Ed, or?
It would have been Ed or the, or the IT committee.
Yeah, it would have been Ed, probably. I don't think, well, IT, Ad-Hoc Tech might have. They, I know they were talking to Ed, or Ed asked them to think about a, a capital request, so we can check with Megan on that.
Okay.
But, but that's, I think in these articles, right, didn't you list that source as the existing operating budget?
Yeah, I tried to see if we could fit in for this town meeting, just do it a little bit quicker, to get everything squared away. So I wasn't sure what the source was going to be yet.
Okay. We can double-check on that one. Yeah, okay. So anyway, so we'll either see whether there's more articles to. So anyway, so we'll either see whether there's more articles to spread them out like that, or if there's a way to combine some of them, that maybe we can combine into two articles or something, depending on, you know, how they're worded. They may not all be, if there's something special for a match, like on the library or something, that might need to stand out a little bit differently. But, okay, go ahead.
Next up, we have our annual operating budget, as well as the water enterprise fund.
Now, just one thing back up, I think your base budget A, so this would have been from last year's language, maybe? Or we presented two budgets last year. We had our base budget, and we had an override budget, so I think...
Oh, yes.
Is that budget A reference would not be in there anywhere?
If we could take a minute to talk about this, the, I'd like us to consider a different way on presenting the budget, instead of the 48 or 92 line items broken out by sections.
For town meeting, we do it by category.
Right, I'd like to condense it even more. Like, when we get to the public safety, I'd like to break public safety out and say police department. Police department wages, here's the cumulative of the sublines, police department expenses, here's the cumulative, two lines. It does two things. Once, or one thing, it still gets the full amount approved, and the details below that, but it allows the department head to say, "I'm short a full-time officer, I need overtime money to cover this, but because we voted for it at the higher level," as long as they don't spend more than that accumulative, they can freely move money without additional town votes, if you follow me. Right, so then when you get down the...
Otherwise, they can't do it until later in the year?
Well, special town meeting, right? And so then if we run out of money, we're at deficit spending. We get the fire, I'd break fire into fire and ambulance, fire wages, fire expenses, ambulance wages, ambulance expenses, right? So the department head's free to manage that budget up to the total amount that the citizens have approved. And the argument not to do that is you don't trust your department heads. But A, first, I trust all our department heads, for the record. But B, if that's the case, they shouldn't be our department heads. So I think it, I think it, select board level needs to see all the detail and say, "Yep, this is, this is how much for off, pick on the PD since that department head is here. This is your officers, this is your overtime, this is your Quinn bill. Here's everything in here." And it totals X for wages. You can't go from wages, you can't take wages and throw into expenses, which is why you don't just say police department. You say, "Here's your wages, here's your expenses, as department head, you manage within those lines."
Okay, so if I'm understanding, you'd have police department, whatever you're calling that title, that's the main category, but then maybe three subcategories under it? There's no money attached to the three subcategories?
No, there would, no, there'd be public safety, under public safety, so that's the title, subtitle, police department wages, X, police department expenses, X, fire wages, X, fire expenses, X, ambulance, and there's something else in public safety. Might be the EMD.
Yeah, it's part of the fire department.
Yeah. And then, and then that's it. So that cumulative still equals those 25 lines we would normally see, but again, picking on the police department, if he has a full-time reliever get deployed, and he has to staff him with overtime, he's got to pay it out of that overtime line item right now, which he would still do, but if he ran short, his surplus is up there in wages, right? Because that full-time officer's not there working, but he can't touch that money without special town meeting approval, because the town voted those individual line items.
Right, because right now, you have equipment maintenance, building expense, custodial wages, all under police, in addition to, like, that's just some of the expense lines.
Yeah.
Then you wouldn't have to do a transfer from building maintenance or whatever to equipment.
Right.
But nothing prevent, nothing in doing this, the department head would not be allowed or permitted to overspend. They'd still have to stay within their budget. Which, and honestly, most of, you know, I think our big department, police, fire, highway, they're all on contract, they're all six-figure people. I think they can do it without us.
So at the accounting level, though, for Bradley, would we still have those actual accounts? All those at the very detailed level?
I don't think anything would change. The only thing that would change on Bradley's part, or the town accountant's part, is if there was a transfer, the department head would initiate the transfer on their signature alone, within those line items. He wouldn't have to then wait for approval at town meeting for Bradley to make the transfer.
Okay. So, good recommendation. I don't know, anybody thoughts about that? I mean, finance, does that make sense with anything you've seen in South Hadley? Does that work?
That must be how it's done. I mean, I don't have to go to town meeting in South Hadley, but I believe that's how it's done, because I know that I just have to stay within my budget line, like my total budget.
Okay.
The individual breakdown that we do just for budgeting purposes doesn't matter, really.
And I didn't prep him, but not to put him on the spot, we could ask our police chief here if this would make his life easier on day-to-day management of his department, or if this would be more cumbersome.
Yeah, Ian, sure.
No, actually, I've asked for this for the last two years, something very similar to this, because of, just like John said, deployments, leaves of absences. And what happens is, I have to, in order to keep the services, the way that we, to maintain the same services, I use my overtime budget for that, and my overtime budget gets drawn very quickly. And as a result, I have to wait until the next, you know, special town meeting for that transfer.
To do any transfer.
Right. And Ian, in the past, when you've had to draw that down and have to wait for the town meeting, the period between when you've exhausted those funds and the town meeting, have you had to make difficult decisions to potentially cut services?
I did, I had to reduce patrols on the midnight shift.
Right, and we operate on a two-person patrol now, so that means there's one officer working by themselves at night.
Where if I had that liberty, I wouldn't have had to do that.
Wouldn't have done that.
I think I've had a transfer on every special town meeting we've had for the last three years.
Yeah, well, I think we probably have something up here now, too. Okay, no, that's helpful. And I think, for me, I guess, just as, you know, just thinking ahead, as we're going to be moving to VEDAR, right, in July?
The new financial accounting system.
Yeah, the new financial system, that, you know, the level of detail of the kind of reports you can generate from that still gives everybody the information they need to know where they're having an issue. I mean, right now, we look at those expense reports and say, "Well, geez, somebody at, you know, we're halfway through the year, and if somebody's already at 70% spent, it raises a red flag," right? So, I mean, there still needs to be that.
And we would still be able to see that data and information.
Yeah, okay, okay. As long as that's in there.
So, Matt and Karen, I'm hearing two things on the table. First, I heard that we simplify the presentation to the voters, that they don't need to review how much is in postage stamps versus FedEx. And I'm totally on board with that. The second point, I think quite distinct from how we present it to the voters, is ensuring that we're actually giving the authority to the department heads to make those management swaps, and not have to wait for a special town meeting. I don't want to achieve the first and inadvertently miss the second or miss lead department.
Yeah, not give the authority that's required to do that.
It seems self-operating, but I don't want it to be missed. The authority that we're granting is significant.
Yeah, well, I think that, you know, the whole notion of, if you're going to delegate something, then the authority and the accountability has to come with it, right? So, for it to be effective.
That's implicit, right.
Theoretically, yeah, okay. All right, so that's a recommendation, in a way, if you guys would like to try and tackle that as you go forward, not to make your life more complicated as we try to put this budget together?
And possibly, maybe for the first year that we do it, you know, perhaps we attach an addendum at the back of the warrant articles that shows the level of detail people are used to seeing, so they can look at that and say, "Okay, the sum of this field equals this, I can tie the two together." Especially the first year that we do it, right? Because there will be questions about it.
I think that's what I was seeing.
All right. Yeah, Bradley, yeah.
On this article, I just want to mention that there's going to be two numbers that we input in this article, that 1,000 for the WPAT loan. Right now, it's 17,500, then the next, it's from ambulance fees, that would be another number that we need to input. Currently, it's 175,000 from ambulance fees.
Yeah.
Just remember that we need another...
So, so...
Two different accounts.
So the WPAT, though, you said was 17, or?
17,500, I believe, is the current.
Okay. So 175 from ambulance fees. Okay. Yeah, so next.
You pull the money out and put it into the budget.
So we have the water enterprise fund. Next, we have everything except for just the indirect costs, so we're 99% done with that, so we can input that.
Otherwise, it doesn't show up on the debt schedule?
The transfer station enterprise fund, so obviously, we've had discussions about that, and I'll talk a little bit more about it in the detail. I'll budget, but that allows us to transfer the money into it. We have the land acquisitions, which I put after all the, I guess, the housekeeping stuff.
Can we back up to the WPAT?
And then one rep above, yep.
So WPAT is the Water Pollution Abatement Trust? And is there an existing loan?
We're getting, there's interest, there's some revenue coming in, is there not, on this? Because that's where Board of Health is using their, are they not taking their...
That was, that's the septic abatement program.
Oh, septic, okay, sorry, wrong one.
Yeah, but that's...
It's WPAT, though, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the WPAT.
Well, did they initiate a borrowing?
This is for elected officials.
Let's go to your 25.
Salaries have been...
All elected officials, $1,000. I mean, if that's what's going to fund the health agent or director, that's not an elected position.
Right. Yeah, so you're questioning the word elected.
Why would I be coming out of the WPAT to fund elected salaries?
Let me just bring up the...
Oops.
Sorry about that.
Lost it. Let me see if I can...
Well, right, and the ambulance receipts wouldn't go to elected officials. The only two elected officials getting paid are the treasurer and clerk, town clerk.
Well, yeah, because the other one's...
Isn't that generic language at the top of our entire budget?
Not positive, I was going to see how it was in last...
Which is where we're going, page six.
Where is it down here? Do we have the one here, are you pulling up last time?
You know, to include but not limited to blah, 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 blah.
Fix the salaries of all elected officials there. Ambulance fee, yeah. Well, that's the way it was.
And further to raise an appropriate 19 million, oh, yeah, so it's spelling out...
It's on the most budget. It does everything.
Yeah.
That was there for last, last town meeting?
Can you make that just a little bit bigger, Scott? Just one or two clicks, there you go.
So...
So the total raised in appropriate is $19 million, of which, yada, yada, yada.
Oh, I see.
Right?
So that, okay, all right.
So the other number to plug in is what's the total budget?
All those different things are making up the money.
Yeah, it's a laundry list.
I couldn't tell from what I was reading.
The emphasis...
So you were questioning whether it should be elected officials, because that implies only the two that are elected? Is that what you're...
Right.
Well, and I think the draft, the draft version we have, I think, is missing the total budget number.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And usually, the payback changes for the WPAT loans, too, from year to year, because the interest goes down.
Yeah.
So I know it was 17,500 last year, but it might not be...
May not be the same amount. We just have to check the amount for what it should be, if we can do that, just to be sure. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we've got to still come up, you started to talk to me about the, the water enterprise fund, yeah? So we're almost ready with that?
Yep, just the indirect costs, we're just finalizing.
Okay.
Then the transfer station as well. And that leads us to the land acquisitions. So these have been approved by KP Law. So this is the motion to move forward and purchase the 89 Clark Street parcel, using the monies from the David Parsons estate. We're currently in negotiations with the price, but we're just seeking for town meeting to approve the actual purchase, so there won't be any, there won't need to be any additional monies for that.
So, do we say that? Because...
Monies donated by this estate?
Well, it's acquired by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, or maybe I haven't gotten that far.
Funded by monies donated by...
Donated by the estate of David Parsons.
Yeah, I see, yep.
So this is for the acquisition, yeah? Okay. And this has already been through KP's?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We actually did take out the gift, purchase, eminent domain, they put it back in, so I understand what you're talking about, you want to be very specific, but...
I see, okay.
And then the next one is the parcel of Off College Highway.
Which parcel is that?
Zero College Highway, or formerly known as?
Or 17 through 125 College Highway?
It's the area right across from Dowd and Parker Oak Grady, that open field up there. So this is one where the land is up for sale, again and again, still under negotiation. Haven't got the final, final figure here, but this is looking to acquire the full parcel for various future town uses, including the public safety complex, including potentially affordable housing, including perhaps spillover for the park commission, playing fields, et cetera. So there've been various requests for other land in town, and this is one of the few spots that's actually available and is open for that. So this is a proposal going forward, and we'll have to fill in some blanks here, and it's, so this one, though, Scott, would be one that has to go to the ballot as well.
It would be a debt exclusion, so it's a temporary period of borrowing.
So, CPA funds can be used for something like this?
Not for the land acquisition. I think eventually, when we get into something like, whether it's under open space or under affordable housing, there could be pots of money from CPC that might be able to be used for the project level, but not probably for land acquisition, from what we've understood, yeah? And here's the transfers that Ian was talking about.
The exciting part of the town meeting. So we have financial transfers for the police station. We did not need one for the fire department, I know I put a placeholder, but I did talk to the chief about that, so he's all set. We do have a matching grant that we would include.
And, yeah, this just needs to be contingent upon, or whatever, yeah, on receiving those. And we may, there's two separate grants, and so assistance to firefighters grants, one for the tanker and one for the SCBA. So acquisition of a tanker, not tanks, tanker, is a typo there?
Keep those tanks, that's more exciting.
And so depending, I mean, if, if the grant doesn't come through, then this is moot, right? But we need to be able to find matching funds, should one or both come through, and it's a 5% match on about a total of close to $900,000 ask of the federal government.
Next up, just, I am going to request some transfer for Town Hall meeting, I'm just working on the exact amount still, and the same thing with Wi-Fi and IT improvements. The sooner we can do this, the better.
Okay.
For that one.
So this might be a duplicate of the capital request?
It might be.
Okay.
Scott, could you back up to firefighters' grant?
That's a federal one.
Transfer from where? Oh, that's the insert, I'm sorry, okay. So you have a placeholder for the source of funds everywhere. Some places you know, some places not yet. Thank you.
Some we know and some to be determined.
Is it multiple tankers or one?
No.
There's one tanker, one tanker, but several SCBA units, yeah.
But the source of the match would not be general operating funds, it would be. I don't know what it would be, what would be a large source?
We've been taking a lot out of insurance, I don't know if that's where we would have it again or not. Or some wages that are underfunded, I mean, empty positions, perhaps? Or, I don't know.
At this level, okay.
I'm not sure, but I mean, those are likely ones that we draw upon, and insurance has been one in the past.
Well, yeah, but $43,000 is a lot.
Yeah, and it's only, you know, again, if it's only, if we get it, so that's why I want to be sure that that language is. I mean, if the town receives, but I think that language might need to be stronger.
Not for capital stabilization for these long-term expensive assets.
Well, see, and that's where I would be going to say, this does justify capital. I mean, to get an $895,000 tanker for $22,000, like, to me, that's a capital expense. That's then going to have a 35-year lifespan, versus trying to find it within the fire. Well, and I heard insurance, so that might be outside of it, but I'd also want to be very cautious, because we may have underspent EMT wages, but we couldn't get away with taking EMT wages. Those have to go back to the, to the ambulance receipts. I'd almost be more comfortable with taking it from capital stabilization, because I still think anything that comes out of those stabilizations is a three-fourth vote.
For some, okay, well, for some reason, I guess I had in my mind that something that was like a match to a grant was not appropriate for capital, but maybe I was wrong. I mean, it's not acquiring the item itself, it's, it's a match to.
To, but it does go towards the purchase, right? It's just our portion of the purchase.
It is, it would be the town purchase, yeah, I mean, town contribution, yeah.
It's a tangible thing, it's not steady.
Yeah, okay, I don't know, Donna, anything?
I don't know what ever happened to, well, there was money gifted to the fire association years ago. And only the principal was not supposed to be spent, only the interest. But it was supposed to be spent on things specified in the will, like CBA and things like that.
That money all got turned over to.
It got turned over to the Firemen's Association.
So now there's no.
It's not part of the town budget anymore, yeah. So unless they were so willing to do that, yeah, it got transferred out of the town budget. Okay, well, we'll have to check on that, and if, yeah, that might affect.
Again, I just, for one, I would say it comes out of capital.
No, I mean, and again, worse comes to worse, if we can find it, because we won't need it probably right away. It depends on, you know, when they come forth with these grants, but, you know, if worse came to worse, we could put maybe a piece of it from ARPA if we had to, because we've done match, you know, grant matches from ARPA before.
Right, but isn't the intent to, as of May 7th, to get the vote in the hopes that the federal government looks kindly on us? And then we're just ready to go and sit on a line and then wait 18 months to get the truck?
At least two years to get the truck, yes, exactly. Yeah, I'm not sure when the, when the, you know, the grants, I don't think would be announced before July.
If we, if we pulled it from the budget, we'd have to encumber the funds and then hold it over and.
Future years.
Yeah, okay.
You know, just a thought.
Let's think about it, yeah, okay, good point. Alright, Town Hall Maintenance, okay?
We're gonna need a little bit more money this year just for Town Hall Maintenance.
Is this for utilities, or is this?
Lot of, like, HVAC, the doors, a few other things that we're gonna need to make sure that we pay for.
Yep. The ADA doors?
No, no, like, the front doors, over here, they had to be adjusted and fixed, so.
Front doors that don't close well?
You mean your predecessor did deficit spending?
I don't know.
I'm not sure that they.
We're pretty close to it, though, so, in case there was an emergency or something that comes up, you know.
It's, it's different, though, I mean, there you go, yeah, because we had done last year, I think, on capital, we'd done the, the repair of the cement apron down at the bottom of the stairs that was falling apart. So that's a capital request that still has to be acted upon, but that was approved last year, so that's different from that, okay. Got it.
And we have the wifi improvements.
Check that out.
The transfer salary for the town administrator. And then we have the general bylaw amendments, so two out of the four have been approved by KP Law. The noise and the.
Unregistered vehicles?
Vehicles, so we're, we should be having the tag sale and the board registers relatively soon, hopefully this week.
Okay.
So the first one is the, the bylaw for tag sales.
So there's three new, three new bylaws and one that's a revision. And the revision is the unregistered vehicles one?
Yep. The next is the nuisance peace and quiet. The board of registers, which is one of the ones that we're waiting for. And then the unregistered vehicles.
And this one, because it's a revision, you end up having to show the strike through of what was the original bylaw? So you need to have to, have to put that in there to show what changed.
Next up, we have the CPA funds. So we have three requests for different projects, Greenway Design, the cemetery fence restoration, and the conservation restrictions. And then the last part of that is we have their CPA program budget.
And we hadn't approved the cemetery money elsewhere, some, somewhere along the way? That was for fixing the water pipe, I think, for one, but we didn't do anything with the fence in previous, previous time? Does that sound right?
Not that I'm aware of.
I thought they couldn't fix it because they couldn't find.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, let me just take a two-second look here, that, I'm just curious on that one. I know we had put in money for the rest of, the repair of the water main, and that got done, so that's.
Watering.
All the, the faucets and.
Water delivery, not the water removal.
Sorry, not the water main.
Correct.
Yes, no, you're.
They were calling it the water main, but yeah, the water line, I guess I would say, yeah. The water line where all the, all the faucets and stand pipes are.
Inflow and then outflow.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Just holding that, but, okay, keep on going, I'll find it if it's there.
We have the CPA annual budget. Have the revolving funds, so the first one is establishing the health department inspection revolving fund account.
And this was to, again, try to help fund the, the cost of the health agent, is that right?
Mm-hmm. And then we have, we would add it to the chart, and then if that passes, we would do the, add it to the revolving fund spending limits. Which I didn't, I didn't carry over any changes from last year.
Did we set an amount for the Board of Health?
No.
Seems like we need, well, that's a spending limit, yeah.
So, yeah, we would add it to.
Most of these seem to be 10 to 15-ish range?
Well, yeah, but we know historically, at least for the past two years, that account's been at 42 to 48,000.
Right, and I think they were saying, if I remember, Kate, when she came and presented to us, that the, the receipts from Board of Health were something like 42,000, 45,000. So they were hoping to kind of break even and be able to use that to cover the, the cost of the health agent. So I mean, that should be the idea.
If this is, if this is, can just, where's, where's burn permits?
What type of?
Burn permits.
Oh, burn permits.
Yeah, only because, was it last, when you say you carried over from last year? Didn't we do a one-time raise the limits to allow for the trailer, and then we had to raise the limits to allow for the lights? And then we had to raise the limits to allow for decals for this grant freebie that we got, that we continue to pay more and more for three years? So I just want to make sure that, if last year we already adjusted burn permits back down to where it historically was, I'm good with it, but if it's inflated, because, so we'd have to look at year over year?
Yeah, it was more a dollar amount that went up on that.
The limit. To allow him to, our former fire chief to purchase that trailer.
For last annual meeting, it was 10,000 for.
Yeah. So it's that $10,000 line, I think, I think historically it's been five, but.
I think it went up higher, though, at some point.
We did, we did a one-time raise, specifically so we could buy that trailer with the lights and all that.
Probably goes back another.
To go with that free grant that we got.
Another year of something there, probably, goes back a bit.
So this is 24, 23, so 22 was $10,000, I'm good with it.
So going back for FY23.
Yep.
So this would have been the 22 town meeting, that had gone up to 20,000.
Okay.
So it got knocked back down to 10, so I think we're back to where it should have been, had been. Looks that way.
And then, last but not least, we have the zoning articles.
What's?
Yeah, they've submitted one to update the zoning bylaw table.
Is this a language change, or? Okay. So you may want to just group the.
Use permit by special permit.
Bylaw section, just, there's general bylaws and zoning bylaws, you might want to just group those together, I don't know.
Alright, group zoning and bylaws, okay.
Perhaps. I mean, it's a separate, separate from the general bylaws, but.
Which article's gonna cause the most controversy? Because that should be the last one, to make sure we maintain the audience. It's not my first town meeting. If you print the most controversial one first, we're gonna lose quorum.
But John, you should know by now, it's never the one that we think is.
That's true, right?
Yeah, we spent a long time arguing over what, ceiling tiles or something last time, it was like.
Always, never known.
Had no clue that that was gonna be such a big issue, right? And wasn't what we were expecting to, to have the largest amount of discussion on, but it, you know, it needed explanation, and I think it finally came through, but it was a surprise to have that one be the one that drew some commentary. So we don't know exactly how many articles that is, but I'm guessing we're in the, probably close to 30-ish without.
I didn't remember.
Without even looking at the capital stuff here, so yeah.
We have the order ready.
Well, I think there's an argument to be made for trying to combine the capital items, if we could, but I think you're gonna need to talk to the town moderator about how to do that, because he manages the meeting for us, so. Okay. So that's kind of the overview, so once we get some figures to put in there?
Yeah, I mean, and perhaps we could, we could talk to Robert, and when we get to the, or suggest to him that when we get to the capital committee ones, however many there are, there are 11 or 12, if we said Article X, and then when A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, by them, in the event that somebody raised an objection wanting to divide the question, it could then be done there. Take A through D together, versus, because he, he'll never let you take Articles 7 through 12 together as a package. But if it's one article, that's easily divisible if there's an objection raised on the floor.
Yeah, you have to be able to separate it out, in case there's.
Right.
You know, we can't assume.
The title, you know, titles of the article, and then subtitles, and kind of group them, like, these are, these are maintenance, these are actual equipments, and, and he could pose the question, is there?
Yeah, we, we used to do that as a consent agenda. So you would take several articles, group them together, and then if anyone at town meeting opposed the grouping, they could take it out and vote on it specifically.
Right.
Yeah, and you might even, because there's two or three there for, for Town Hall, there's two or three for Norris, I mean, you might even.
Somehow group them that way.
Might even just group them that way, so that it was easier to kind of track, and then if they had to be subdivided out at discussion level, we could do that, I guess.
And he should, oh, Chief Police is sending emails. He should, moderator should be back from England pretty soon, right? He's, he's at next week?
I think he'll be back, yeah. Okay, anybody have any thoughts and questions, are we, is there any other article that anybody can think of that we're missing here? I've done a great job trying to capture all the ones that were coming at you.
It's a lot going on.
Yeah. Okay, if nothing else, alright, let's keep on moving on the agenda here. I think we're gonna keep on with the budget discussion and do that, since we have, even though we don't have a quorum, but we have both Donna Whitley and Regia Green here, so I think we can talk about budget issues. They just won't be able to make any deliberations, but they can certainly give their input and their advice, as far as I know.
Is there a reason why the executive session is on for 7?
It's on for 7:30, I think, yeah. We're gonna get through the budget first and then go into that, yeah. Okay, so, go ahead, Scott, with whatever your newest thinking is, and.
So I did just add, starting off with a few thoughts, I had, you know, I'm kind of coming into this, the bottom of the eighth, but learning everything, you know, pretty quickly on how things are done, but as John had mentioned, I think there's some ways that we can kind of look at how we update our processes. So one of the ways, you know, I'd like to reach out with the summer and into the fall, the different stakeholders, the select board, you know, the finance committee, talking to the department heads and the employees, and see how we can kind of shape our, our process to kind of make things more efficient and more transparent.
Right.
One thing I'd like to kind of do is a budget calendar, similar to other communities, you know, close to the end of the summer, just so everyone's kind of prepared to know when the meetings are gonna happen, when things are due. Also for transparency, for the citizens to know, you know, when they can start putting their input in. The other area is doing a townwide financial plan, and I think that also goes into the, to public transparency. One of the things that most communities do, this is one that we, that we used to do, but it's, it's a way just to kind of show town meeting in the community, a lot of the major points in a budget, such as full-time employees, where your personnel costs have grown, employee benefits, which is a huge cost driver, OPED and pension benefits, your liabilities. Where we are in funding it, which is important. Some of the cost drivers, like health insurance, if, if that's gonna be a larger or smaller increase. Our capital planning, projected debt, major funding, project calendars, you know, sources of income. You know, we probably won't get to this all in one year, but I think it's important to slowly build a lot of the key areas to kind of show people. And then the tax impact, so.
So suffice it to say, you're gonna have a different approach to the budget next year.
Well, no, I mean, yeah, I like it, you know, I, I didn't use that one, but, you know, Hadley does a very similar one. I mean, it's, it's a very lengthy book, but it's, it's transparent, it tells the story, and folks can argue or debate the assumptions that are used, but a lot of these things, like the, you know, the retirement contributions, this is what our obligation is. This is when the state says we have to be fully funded, and short of doing a pension obligation bond, which I don't think Southampton's anywhere near doing, you know, we have to deal with this, and these numbers are just gonna go up. And I also think that as we are replaced here on the select board, that it doesn't, you're not starting from ground zero if you have the previous year's book, and you can read it and have a general understanding of it. I'm a big believer that the, like, the capital, the town needs a capital project. Every single issue that we pass on is because we don't have enough money. But if the capital committee never gets more than 100,000, how in the world are we ever gonna replace 104,000 dollar truck? Right, so there's gotta be a way to go out there and say, hey, here's our five-year plan, and we're gonna have a rolling million-dollar, you know, debt exclusion that we're gonna renew every five years, but that's gonna give us 200,000 a year per se. And in order, in the order to communicate that to the voters, you've got to be able to show the picture and show the future, and how the money's gonna be used, and then you gotta follow through with it. Too long, I think, Southampton, like many other towns, has been living in a 12-month snapshot.
Yeah.
And never looking to the future, that's someone else's problem, that, kick the can, kick the can.
Well, and I think to the extent that the main, the big departments, anyway, have got their capital plan for their vehicle replacement or their equipment replacement, that all exists at highway, police, and fire.
They do, but we never fund it.
Exactly, and we, but we don't look at it, I mean, they've got their kind of, it's almost still a little bit siloed in that regard. It doesn't get folded into a bigger perspective, I think, in terms of the future of the town.
And I'll pick on a different department head tonight, you know, you look at our highway superintendent. Half of our capital projects are his, you know, A, he's inadequately staffed, and, and perhaps if the Collins Report will address that, or union negotiations will address that, but B, we don't have the vehicles over there, because nobody wants to spend $300,000 on a street sweeper, or $200,000 on a dump truck, because why would you? Well, yeah, most of us don't drive around street sweepers and know what those are. You know, we'll, we'll believe the, the police chief when he says, I need $75,000 for a new truck. Okay, that kind of makes sense, we can understand that, but, you know, we just, we need to do a better job at communication. Because then I think when you go to the polls, if you communicate, it's the 80/20. 80% will read it and understand and go with it, you're always gonna have the dissenters.
Yep.
That are gonna say, if it raises my taxes a penny, I don't want to do it.
Sure, no, that'll always be there.
I mean, you made a point about a street sweeper earlier, though, that we're spending more.
Right.
To rent one, or whatever, than we would if we purchased a truck. So if you can fit that debt service for a new street sweeper within the budget.
Right.
Because we're already paying it out of expenses, so just move it to a different line.
Yep.
Without doing an override.
Right.
Why not do that, because you're saving money ultimately?
Right, but you have to be able to show that picture, you know, that explanation, not just, I'm with the government, trust me, I'm here to help you.
I know, but it's easier sell than saying, than saying, okay, well, we need this, and it's an override. We need this, and it's an override.
Right.
You know, like, if we're paying the money anyway, and you can save money in the long run, then just move, you know, sell it at town meeting as an article, that we need this much money, but we're gonna finance it over six, seven, eight years, or whatever.
And if you only, every six. And if you only, every six years, you only looked for that override for that specific purpose, so every six years, we want a million dollars to fund the capital so it stays consistent once we get there and here's all the equipment and the pattern, we're going to do it over time.
That's different, that's, you're talking about capital override.
Yes.
But yeah.
No, I mean, that does seem to make some sense in terms of trying to save money that's already being spent on the main activity anyway here, but yeah.
So we took the course a few weeks ago on long-term financial planning, so we want to start instituting some of those practices as well. Uniform documents that are a lot easier to read, you know, we might be able to look at a spreadsheet and look at the budget and understand it, but a lot of people in the public won't be able to. I mean, it'll take them hours to kind of look at everything and figure out what these two or three words describing the line item is. So I think it's, you know, explaining it a little bit better, making it a little bit easier to read and then public transparency, maybe doing website and doing the different stages of the budget development, putting the financial plan online, making everything available.
No, and I'm just going to harp again that, you know, as much as we try to get stuff out on social media, we've invested in putting up a new website and more and more people are going to the website. I'm going to try and see if I can get some statistics about, you know, what pages are being looked at the most or, you know, what, what kind of volume is, you know, is it attracting? But I really am, we'll keep on encouraging departments and so forth to not just automatically go to Facebook, go to the website first and then get it off to some other social media so that people at least can see it, you know, I think that's really important.
So just looking at the actual budget.
Yeah, sorry.
I just wanted to add something, I don't know if this is appropriate.
Yeah.
Two things I've noticed in a couple of meetings I've been to, is it difficult to understand the grants, how grants come in, whether you're seeing the department as a whole, including the grants, what they're funding, because there were a couple of departments that came in that showed us only the part that wasn't funded by grants and that was just difficult for me to understand myself.
Okay.
So that was my, minimum reserves, just, you know, when the school's in the end of the day and they have these big reserves and they're going to take a certain amount from the reserve, I didn't really understand, well, how much was there to start with, how much did you laugh, is that appropriate? Most of the, two kinds of things, I mean, the information you have and I think from Walsley, I thought Blackstone or something, you just do, even the historical trends, it's very hard for them to know how much we're spending and headcount and all that stuff.
Right, yeah, no, exactly. Yeah, a lot of the grants that we do anyway, just having been involved in it from the Grant Committee, because the Grant Committee is only three years old now, but most of the grants are going out for a specific item or specific, you know, it's not something that would normally be able to be funded in the budget, it's a project that has always wanted to be done, like the Greenway for example, and it's finally being able to be done right now through grants or I think both the Police Chief and Fire Chief and Randall too do apply for some mini-grants at their level, but again, those are funding specific things, you know, whether it's police vests or defibrillators or whatever, so, yeah. Yeah, and maybe the grants.
I think it's the library especially.
Okay, maybe the.
And the COA, the Formula Grant.
Well, right, even the state grants, I think the school is like that too.
Yeah, I was going to say, the school grants are more complicated, I think, yeah.
But they're hard.
Right, on the school side, when you layer in the grants, yes, Norris is 5.3 million and Hampshire Regional is 5.7, but we're spending, this town is spending sixteen million dollars on the education, the fact that almost a third of it comes in from grants should be part of the story. And that particular is reoccurring because if those grants weren't there, you'd still have to pay that sixteen million dollars.
Total costs.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay, go ahead Scott.
So just looking at the overview of the budget, so the first step is, you know, I've just looked at some of the budget requests, so how could we reduce some of the line items, mostly due to available sources like the Health Director being paid out of septic fund and the ComCom agent possibly using the ARPA money that's existing, and then there was also some increases based on the needs and requests, such as the Council on Aging, we had the request that their salaries be fully funded outside of the grant that they receive in state, and then our IT will need to be increased to cover our new contract with the services.
And that's the managed services for IT, not, not the Wi-Fi per se, it's, it's an actual on-call IT entity, yeah.
So there are still some unknowns, the highway salaries, as I, as I mentioned earlier, we started negotiating with the highway union, so that's obviously not going to make this town meeting, so it might be something that we look at for the special, hopefully we can come to an agreement, but those are still some kind of unknowns that I had to put some placeholders in. The Collins Center salary impact is still out there and I'll go into a little bit further detail, and then the water indirect cost, everything else was pretty much minor placeholders that we would just carry over. So when we look at the entire revenues versus what the request was, it came out to a difference of two hundred and thirteen, about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, based on the recommendations of the increases and the reductions and then what we actually have for projected revenues. So how are we going to balance that? So there's a couple of different ways, so we could certainly cut the two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, but after looking at all the different line items, that's going to severely impact the wages, the services, it would mean usually the elimination of some positions, I mean, it would be worst-case scenario. Obviously there's the override or we can find some additional funding sources, which brings us to the stabilization fund. So one of the things that I would propose to bring the budget into balance this year would be to use two hundred thousand dollars from the stabilization fund, currently we have four hundred and twelve thousand dollars in it, we would have a maximum of two hundred thousand dollars to balance the budget and that would leave us with roughly about twelve or thirteen thousand dollars right now to cut from the budget. Right now, it would leave remaining balance of two hundred and twelve thousand for the stabilization fund. But that's just a little bit of the story, so last year, as we mentioned, that there was a three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we had moved into the Hampshire Regional costs with the idea that once this year's free cash is certified, we move that money back into the stabilization fund. So we should have that amount available to move into the stabilization fund as soon as we finish with our books and then from that, we should have roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars left over for our three counts that we generally appropriate from two, from free cash to.
That's assuming that we get the exact same free cash certification as last year.
Yep, so it may, it'll be roughly the same.
Or total, you're estimating free cash at around four seventy-five is what I'm looking at there, you're adding those two together, is that it?
I just used that, last year's number as a placeholder, I'm not exactly sure what the number will be.
So hopefully we'll know in a couple of weeks, once we get it, but, so we do have a policy for thirty percent going to the operating stabilization, thirty-five percent for the capital budget and then ten percent for the OPEB trust. This year, depending on, you know, we might want to think about, because we're so close to the end of the year, we're not with the free cash, we might want to think about how we appropriate everything.
So I would just say on that, it's not a policy, I mean, it's a bylaw that recommends these, the Select Board is not obligated to even put these questions forward, but past practice as we do. I wouldn't want to put these questions forward to dump a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Well, first of all, I think OPEB's off the table, I think we need to fund that because you talk about kicking the can down the road. So if you're, if your recommendation to us, which we can, I'm hoping we're going to debate, is to use two hundred thousand, I wouldn't want to ask them to pull two hundred thousand out and then ask them to put a hundred and eight back in. You know, it's doing the two-step dance here. I would just say we forego funding, you know, we put the ten percent in the OPEB because that's a future obligation, it's just continuing to grow and that's millions of dollars to us right now and it is only ten percent we're putting in, but, you know, I just toss that up there.
So you're saying not to fund operating and capital stabilization, is that what you're saying?
If we're only going to pull two hundred thousand dollars, which again, you know, I, I, at this point, based on what I know, I'm not in favor of doing that at all, pulling two hundred thousand out, but if, if my other three esteemed colleagues so vote to do that, then I would recommend, you can't pull two hundred out and then ask them to put a hundred and eight back in, because aren't you really asking for eighty-two thousand? You're just going through the motions?
Well, and this is hypothetical that we get free cash certified, if we don't, we still would need to balance the budget, so this is like the worst-case scenario. So if we, if we don't get free cash certified, we still need to make up that two hundred thousand dollars.
When do we publish, well, free cash needs to be certified by May 7th in order to make this work.
Oh, even before?
Well, no, because you can amend, you can put a placeholder in there and we can amend it on the floor. Right, if free cash gets certified after May 8th, we don't have it. And my guess is, the state usually needs two business days, so.
Yeah, they turn it around usually very quickly from our experience, but.
But anyways.
So Scott, just re-explain what you were thinking there.
Sorry. So taking the two hundred thousand, you know, worst-case scenario, we don't have any other free cash and then essentially what would happen is, this is just an idea that Bradley came up with for the free cash distribution, so we would have to think about how we're going to distribute the free caches here as well.
If we get. Bradley, your thought on this is, because normally we would only, what, move seventy-five percent and have twenty-five for discretion, you're saying use it all up because it's so late in the year?
Well, I'm saying that we generally transfer it to those three accounts and we have three hundred and fifty thousand that we need to move to the operating stabilization, so we had a hundred and twenty-five thousand hypothetically remaining, I don't, didn't know of any other use for free cash other than putting it into those three accounts, so I just proportionally updated it so the rest of the money goes into those three accounts. It's just my idea.
Because the downside is that if you don't appropriate that twenty-five percent at the end of the year, it falls to free cash to get certified again in three years.
Any thoughts? From finance?
I thought I gave you a bunch of thoughts.
So that would, so that brings us to a hypothetical operating stabilization fund of just over six hundred thousand dollars after town meeting if everything goes well. And it did bring up an idea or kind of like a question I had is, you know, what our stabilization fund balance should be or what it could be. I know that we have the percentages that we've put into it, but, you know, where should it be? You know, should, should it be five percent, ten percent, seven percent, should it be a set number? We may not be able to reach it anytime, you know, relatively soon, but I think it might be a good way to start thinking about, you know, how much we need to obtain in that. So right now, if we were going to do, you know, the DOR recommends, you know, at least five percent of the total operating budget. So right now, if we were going to put in our entire stabilization fund against our budget, it'd be funded at about two point nine percent. So next is the Collins Center report, so we, I was able to receive a draft yesterday and looking through it quickly, I didn't have any conversations with the Collins Center yet, but there are, I do have some questions about their results, their methodology and their data and, you know, how they obtained it, what they used, what the comparable communities are, what the positions are, so it's going to take a little bit longer to actually get something that's usable. I know it's not the best situation, but I, I just don't feel comfortable looking at the data that they provided to move forward with any changes this large.
And I think, I think too, we don't, I don't think we were ever privy to the scope of work that was given to them too in terms of what, what we were expecting for the results, so that's maybe part of our challenge too, to not know, but I'm sure there must have been something in there for comparables that they had to, it would be just normal process, right, to, to do that, but just understanding why they chose who they chose or is that what you're thinking more?
Yeah.
They should have interviewed everyone and they should have.
They did, they did all that, no, I mean, all that preliminary stuff of looking at job description, but talking to people, interviewing, you know, that was all done, all that front-end stuff was done, so, but I guess I don't know what, what the report was supposed to consist of, I don't know.
Like one of the things is, you know, Granby is not a comparable, but Agwam is, so.
You don't think Granby is comparable to us, population size and?
No, what he's saying.
No, no, Granby wasn't included, but like a place like Agwam was. Oh, we're not Agwam.
It makes sense, yeah.
You sure they gave us our report, not Southampton's report?
So that's part of your questioning then, where you're seeing things like that.
Exactly, things like that, and, you know, do they actually understand the Highway Superintendent position, because, you know, you can't compare it to a DPDW Director, but you also can't compare it to a traditional Highway Superintendent because Randall does so much more. So that's like a very specific type of position that you need to look at and do they understand that? Those, those types of things kind of raise a little bit of red flags and then, you know, comparing, you know, to, you know, to Holyoke and East Hampton and some salaries and some of the wages are a little bit skewed, so how do they, how do, how do they handle ones that are a little bit, the outliers or, you know, below the normal? Do they throw them out, do they adjust them? Because if you only have a couple of data points and you have one that's a large outlier, that's going to skew everything.
Skew everything.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the list that you provided us with the summary, I'm referring to the, the grade steps, right, that lists the positions. There's thirty-one on there, if I exclude the Water Department, because they're not funded by the General Fund, if I exclude the Fire Chief, who's under an employment agreement, I don't see the Highway Superintendent or the Police Chief in here. So that's four that I exclude from thirty-one, that leaves what, twenty-seven people? So could we, as a placeholder, attempt to identify or put in X dollar amounts under the Select Board line item of, just for sake of argument, call it twenty-seven thousand dollars? So obviously that makes our deficit more.
Right.
But I also think some of the wages that made it into budget one need to be reduced because whether it was a misunderstanding of the instructions or a slip of the pen, that they were very generous to themselves.
Well, that's the good news, is I think a lot of it could be funded already, what's in the budget.
But at least then we have the line items, so we don't need to wait for free cash and we can have a special town meeting just to appropriate those lines if we're not able to do the, the wage adjustments within the, by May 7th.
So are we fairly confident though, I guess, with, part of the discussion we had last time with having everybody's, everybody's current grade and step as they are now and what they were asking for in their number one budget. Everybody's, or even if they didn't make that extra step increase like they were told to, that we've now got that, in our minds at least, that that's been accounted for.
Outside for a couple of departments, like building, that's a hundred percent, which we would, I would want to adjust, it looks like most have built in roughly a three percent increase, so we can call that a COLA.
Which is kind of what we had, I think, told them, I think, for the instructions, if I'm not mistaken, yeah.
So one of the things, you know, because we don't have a report and three percent probably isn't going to be enough just across the board to fix the issues.
Well, sorry, but I mean, there are some people on here that have eight percent increases and there's no, so the piece that, it's easy on the, it's, it's easy when someone's salary, say, okay, this is their number, but like some, some, like there's an individual in here, I'm not going to mention names, but there's an individual in here that has a hundred and twenty-three percent increase and without knowing the story, they had a mid-year adjustment, so that makes, in my mind, makes sense, but it sticks out like a sore thumb. But also for the hourly folks that are here, what were they budgeted for hours in twenty-four? And what does that calculate to budgeted in twenty-five? You know, are they staying consistent with hitting the General Fund? Now, yes, we heard from at least two departments that they were requesting additional hours be assigned to the General Fund and without saying that's good or bad, I'm just saying, you know, I think we need to understand that because it's part of the, well, you're putting the names up there.
So yeah, I think we need to be clear on some of those things for sure, because I don't think we've actually made any moves to.
Right, because.
Add hours to anybody unlike we had done a few years ago.
Correct, or, or if we do, I just want us as a body to knowingly make that vote, to say, yeah, this is higher than the 103, but it's because of XYZ, because I'm, if I subtotal it down the bottom, the total wages are going up by six point six percent, right, there's a fifty-five thousand dollar adjustment.
I mean, on average, it's a little bit skewed with the library and a few other things.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we took out the high and low, I think it might be, you know.
But I believe library is just trying to get the minimum wage, which we.
Yeah, we did that though. The substitutes, they were all put at fifteen anyway, a few years ago, like last year.
You're right, I'm sorry, a dollar above minimum wage is where she wanted to move them to.
But, yeah, that, that percentage looks really off for them.
So roughly, you know, excluding the water or contractual employees, you know, one percent is about a little over eight thousand and one and a half percent increase is twelve five, two percent is a little under seventeen, two and a half is twenty thousand and a three percent, so that's kind of just an overview of. So that's kind of just an overview of looking at percentages. You know, it doesn't include fire, EMT wages, which is outside of police, our largest wages. So that kind of needs to be handled a little bit differently because it's such a large item.
Do you have enough information on the Collins report? Well, not if you're challenging the numbers, but let me ask a question. Do you have enough on the Collins report to just look at that first line, the assistant accountant? You know, is, is the 19,811 more in line with the Collins report or is it the 20,000? I mean, are any of these, because that would be my other argument. There's potentially some people on this list that are making what the Collins report says or better, and therefore no adjustment is warranted.
Yeah, but it sounds like if we don't have the comparables, we don't know that with enough confidence yet perhaps, until you maybe talk to the folks at Collins to understand how they, that methodology, which we're talking about because.
Right.
I think we want to, you know, refrain from making any assumptions. We need to be sure that we're working on as solid information as we can. And if it's not, it's got a few holes in it, just the way you're seeing it now. And again, it was supposed to be just a quick draft for you, I think, probably so. But I think, you know, now's the time for you to question that so that we get a final report that is usable and makes sense, obviously, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So one of the temporary solutions, you know, depending how we want to kind of proceed with the Collins report, so I just did a quick example. A lot of times municipalities will put aside a certain pool of money.
Yeah.
And then depending how far people are away from where they should be, you would appropriate a little bit more and then the people that are closer to where they should be might just get a COLA or a little bit extra. And the people that are above where they should be would generally, might get redlined and, you know, their salary held. So there's, that's usually how it's treated. So for example, you know, depending how the select board wants to proceed, if we have like just a made up position, you know, security analyst at $50,000 and they're $4,000 behind the Collins Center report, you know, we could keep their FY '24 salary. We could do a COLA adjustment, whether it's 1, 2, 3, whatever percent, it looks like 3% has already been baked in to most department budgets. And then, you know, year after year, we can supplement that with a adjustment from the pool of money. So the final salary for FY '25 would be 52,750 and that's a part of their COLA and money from the, the funding pool to adjust the salaries.
Yeah. Which goes back to, I'd like, if possible, to fit in a, a line item under the select boards section.
Yeah.
Call it $25,000 as a placeholder. And see if we can make it work within that.
Cause I think in times, I mean, I'm trying to think back on my first couple of years on the board. I mean, there were a year or two that we didn't even put in any COLA. I mean, there was no, there wasn't even a 2% that we were able to find money for.
Well, and that's part of how we got to where we are. If you were a member of the union group, your contract dictated it and the people not in the union were the ones left at the end say, oh, there's no money left.
Exactly, yeah.
And you have a line called wage and comp. Yeah, so that's kind of like, you know, if you, if you have to hire new people mid-year or, like I think it's at the town administrators discretion, the way South Adley is set up. So they have, and it's also used for RPBEs, which.
RPBEs are?
Performance reviews.
Performance.
Performance reviews, yeah. Evaluations. Some merit increases and so forth, kind of thing.
Right, because they have, other than union, they have it stored to give them COLAs.
Yeah.
So let's bring into like the philosophy of how we want to do compensation in the future. You know, there's, there's a million examples I can go through, but you know, do we want to maintain a step based system? Do we want to do a combination of step and merit? Do we want to do ranges based on the market? So that's kind of a, you know, there's a lot of different options. So we don't necessarily have to adopt the exact method that Collins Center puts forward, but I mean, it'll be, you know, it'll be ready eventually, but we don't have to do it that way. We can still transform it to what.
Still make it our own, yeah. Yeah, cause I think Collins, I think Collins was supposed to be giving us ranges. They were not going to give us steps to my knowledge.
Low, high to mid and then we develop our steps on our own.
Step basis that were created, God knows how many years ago now. And so that's been the challenge here, right? But, so, you know, trying to figure out a better way to do things that is understandable to everybody and, you know, easier to manage, I think would be great.
The thing with the steps is you have to, you have to change it every year.
Right.
It has to increase.
Right.
Because that's what happens. If you go a year or two and you don't continually update it, then it's.
You're totally behind. And so I think a couple of years ago, when Reenie was still on the board, we made that attempt to try and at least, you know, categorize some of the positions according to, you know, levels of responsibility, et cetera, and try to bring up some of the ones that were the lowest paid up a bit onto the scale, but knowing that that wasn't, that was a temporary Band-Aid solution, but nothing permanent. So however, we can be working towards something that really will be able to be maintained and whether you, I don't know, how would you, if you had like a median, a low, median and a high, right? You'd be able to adjust for inflation as you go along somehow?
Well, I hope there would be a written evaluation.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, well, number one step, written performance evaluations have to happen. I will say that I don't think that's been a, a norm. I mean, it may be in our personnel rigs, but I don't know that I've ever seen too many being done. So there may be some, but not, not across the board.
One way you can do it with the ranges, you have the medium, you have, you have the minimum and the maximum, and then you have the midpoint. And a lot of times the midpoint will reflect the market analysis that we determine and we have to have consistency. But every year we would look at the ranges and move the midpoint by what we think the market is moving. So if the market's 1%, we move the midpoint, 1% of it's 3%, we move it to 3%.
Okay.
And then we move the maximum and the minimums to do that as well. Now, that doesn't necessarily affect the salary, that's just keeping the actual scale that we use in line with, with the market base. Now, depending on where people are in the range, so some people might be at the midpoint, below the midpoint or above the midpoint, and that should be determined by their qualifications or education, their experience, things like that. So you can adjust where they are in the range based on what the midpoint in the market is. And the midpoint would be a competent person that meets the minimum qualifications essentially.
So I think, I think the.
Makes sense, actually.
It is, it's more labor intensive.
No, true.
But, but then there's incentives for folks to do a good job because they get a positive review. Then you have the debate of, well, it's all in the mind of the person that's actually doing the review and there's pros and cons on both sides. But right now, we're showing that we have a shortfall of 212 and I'm suggesting we, we need to add in at least 25,000. So that brings us up to 236 shortfall. With that shortfall, have we, because we haven't gotten to the budget yet and I don't know when we're going to do this, but there's two things. Is one is if we're all in agreement that we're going to put on the revolving account for the Board of Health, have we removed a significant portion of the Board of Health contracted services that was in the budget?
No, I have to do.
So they're at 46. I would argue 10,000 or even 12,000 for seed money. So there's 36, so, you know, we're already meeting that $25,000 placeholder that I suggest we have and reducing our deficit.
Cause I think we did agree that we would want to put in some seed money to start that thing going.
I don't know if it was Chris or Jerry, somebody made a valid point that it's not all, the charges aren't always 100% going to be borne by the person pulling the permit.
I think Kate said that in her presentation, yeah.
So that made sense to me and I figure if they're, if they're 44, 48, put in enough money to carry the first quarter for the first year and then we could, we'll have a history and then we can adjust downward in the future years. The, and I know it's, it's small potatoes, but I mean, Finance Committee has never spent money. You know, do they need the $200 for, are you going to advertise?
Jumped in.
You want pencils?
Yeah, and some of the redline ones, you're still going to be checking, right, on some of those?
So I can reduce this one by 30,000.
I'd bring it down to 12.
Yeah.
You know, as a starter.
30,000.
You know, and then again, if we put the 25 up in select board now, so we're down to $207,000 shortfall. I would have, I would question postage. I don't know, I mean, I'm getting, we're putting the cart before the horse here, but.
For all the election?
The governor, oh, yeah, but to Reggie's, to Reggie's point, the Secretary of State sends us 10 to 20,000 a year to cover those costs. It just builds up in, in the clerk's expense costs. But besides that, I wasn't even thinking, I'm taking our tax bills and all that stuff. So the Vadar system, did we buy the piece where we can send out electronic tax bills to avoid all that postage to start with? We already use the, our deputy collector, no, I'm sorry, Unipay. If the town's still going to use Unipay, Unipay has a module for electronic, you have to opt in for electronic tax bills. And then you get an email, hey, your bill's due. I, as taxpayer, can say, you know what, my bill's due, just automatically hit my bank account and pay my bill and I'm done. The question is, I don't know the answer to this.
People have to opt in.
Right, but is, is that a $2,000 module? And if doing, spending $2,000 for that module saves us 10 grand?
See, we use Envoice Cloud.
Yeah.
And for those paperless bills that people have opted into, they can sign up to get an email notification without being paperless.
Yes.
So then they just get the email notifying them that there is a bill. But I don't think that we really save, that we really save a lot on paperless because Envoice Cloud charges us a percent point of the bill.
Yeah.
For those paperless bills.
So it might not be worth it.
Might not be worth it.
So they charge us 40 cents and it's 60 per, per letter. It's a bulk mailing for a stamp.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
I do.
So I don't think it's a significant savings for us.
And then the other, with the governor's bill that's currently before the House about the government reform, it eliminates the annual production, no longer required to produce paper annual meeting booklets. There only has to be one. Everything, and then an electronic version. I mean, we, how many do we print? 100 of them? We spend $500 on it.
For the town report, you mean?
Yeah, exactly. We don't have to do it anymore.
We, I think we print 50 or 75 at the most.
For $500?
Yeah.
For $500?
Yes. No, no, but I mean, we, we used to present, I think, many, I mean, most every town household had a town report. So going down to 50 or 75 at the most, I think, is all we do. But yeah, it's always been $500 since I've been on the board.
But to your point about using the website.
There are some people, yeah.
One hard copy available to sign out from a clerk, PDF version on the website.
No, we'd have to have a few available because I think there are people that seem to.
But loss says one. If you want, if you want to come in and buy one, absolutely.
Well, maybe, okay, maybe that's it too, yeah. But yes, they, they're all on the website anyway.
I'm a neighbor and we come to me there and I'll give you, but I get a whole stack, I get everything on my computer.
Oh, he took our paper away from us tonight. I was not prepared for this.
And it was one sided. It's like, oh my gosh, it's such a waste.
We're, we're working against all that, believe me. But yeah, I think, you know, we do put all the town reports in the town, town meeting warrants, they end up on the website now anyway. So we've made a, a collection of that. Yeah, there's ways to, to check that.
So, so the, and then, so you already, you already addressed that 30,000 issue, so those two points.
Yeah.
And then I, I think there's probably another 7,000 to 10,000 potential savings if we just look at holding people to the number of hours they worked last year to this year with only the 3% adjustment, unless there was a mid-year correction that's documented by PCF we know about. We can still go above and beyond because we, we have a request from the Board of Health and the Council on Aging to look at those, but again, transparency. Here's maintaining the same, here's doing the extra, and for all the right reasons, we want, might want to approve all those, but we should see that number broken out. And then the flip side of it is, have we really taken a hard look at the revenue?
Yeah, we haven't talked about revenue since we've been here.
Okay. Do you have the revenue screen that we can put up at all or not? Just one thing too, while we were on this, a reserve fund is something that we've only just been putting in like 5,000 every year.
Yeah.
I don't know that if we have any extra money, but it just feels like we need to keep building that fund better.
My, my personal feeling is the balance of that reserve fund should be whatever and I have no idea what it is because it was such a closely hard-held secret. What is our deductible on our insurance policies? Because that's where that money's going to come from.
Yeah.
You know, if we have a $10,000 deductible, then that's what should be, my guess is it's probably 50,000 and we can't get there overnight.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well, good point.
You know.
Okay. Well, but, yeah, so you're going to have to make that a lot bigger if you can see any.
Just one, one last comment on the reserve fund is once you fund it and you don't spend it, it just falls to free cash.
It does after.
So it's not a reoccurring expense until you actually use it, except for the first year that you designate it.
Okay.
Right? Because the 5,000 we don't spend this year comes up in free cash.
We haven't had to spend it yet this year. I mean, we've, we've had a couple of times where we've spent it right now, but it just, I mean, for a town, it just feels like 5,000 bucks is really small for any.
Reserve line assists.
It's a separate line in the, in the budget for reserve.
It falls under the Finance Committee's approval, so July through April, it requires joint action of both Finance and the Select Board in order to use it. May and June, the Select Board can just use it.
And in the past, I think the, since I've been on Finance Committee, which has only been a couple of years, I think only some previous fire chief requested.
Previous fire chief did a, did a repair on his own at the building and then came looking for money to pay for it after the work was done.
Well, anyway, so anyway, that's, if you don't have the money, that's fine. Let's talk about revenue then, so if you can.
I can't read that.
Yeah. Collapse a few columns or something or, I don't know, what can we see there?
We have very top level trend line year on year.
Hang on a sec.
Trend lines.
I mean, please. Are we getting, are we expecting less revenue this year than less?
I can't, I wouldn't think so.
That's my gut, looking at how the numbers fall.
Bradley's the excellent.
Good, there we go.
All right.
Put him in the driver's seat. Put him in the driver's seat so we can see this. Okay, then we can just kind of see where we're going.
Projected expenses now.
That's, a little bit more Bradley, a little bit, yeah. Yeah, that's better.
I'll ask him for it.
Okay, so what do we got there?
Top portion is property taxes. I don't believe we can adjust that in any way. Next is education.
Sorry, Bradley, did you, did you use the word trust or adjust?
Adjust.
Adjust, sorry. We can't trust this. No, I'm, I can.
So yeah, go ahead, wait a minute, Donna's got a question.
We've got prior year levy and a 2.5% increase and then new growth.
And that new growth came from the assessors?
Yes.
Okay. And the, the overlay, the assessors are comfortable leaving that at 93,000?
Yes. Next section is education aid, which is, I believe, a lot from cherry sheets.
Yeah.
All this and the non-education aid, also from cherry sheets.
And those are the governor, the, there hasn't been a more updated version?
I checked maybe last week and nothing's changed. Then we get to our local receipt revenue.
Yeah.
And I feel these are very conservative, well, as conservative as.
Do you have the fiscal '24?
Let me see. I would have to unhide if I.
I wish, yeah. It's, it's hard to know because I think we're, we don't even have one. It's, it's hard to know, because I think we're, we don't even have one, we maybe six months of '24 actual.
Right.
So we don't really, you know, we don't see them.
I don't know if we added, we had 24 estimates, and then actuals as of December 31st. So when we look at motor vehicle.
So we've only collected.
That's one quarter's, one quarter's worth, or.
154,000?
Well, because the big commitment went out in February, and we just do March, but we don't have any of those revenues.
Right, yeah, this is half a year then, right?
But, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But I thought the revenue, I thought you just sent us April 4th revenue numbers. Is your, is your, is the revenue?
Revenue's accurate as of January 23rd, 2024. There's, there's a few more rest seat packets I can review, but I've been busy with budget and everything else. But soon we'll be up to the end of January, and then we can move on to February. But yes, we're still a few months behind. So, I don't know what you want to see here, but motor vehicle, it's hard to see, because we're not in the big revenue-earning months.
Right, that, which was March, so it would have come in in your April packets.
So we estimated 1,050,000 in 2024, and we're now estimating 1,070,000. So we're above what we estimated last year.
And we don't know what the first commitment.
It's an oddity.
Do you know, Bradley, do you know what the first commitment amount was?
I can't recall. So, again, the change from '25 to '24, and this column may are saying we're estimating more for motor vehicle, the same for penalties and interest, more for payments and low taxes, 5,000.
I'm sorry, what, why, why the increase in payment and low taxes?
I think it was based on.
I think we state, didn't that go up from the?
It's by contract, so it should be a fixed number. Maybe we got an increase, but.
I think they were talking about increasing that, because a lot of the towns, I know.
That's not the state one. That is either the Ho- Hoyle Water Works or, or Hoyle Gas and Electric.
And that's a calculation that is done by the assessors, I think.
Unless it's a fixed, Hoyle Water Works is probably a fixed number.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking of.
I was thinking there were 50,000.
In terms of the state thing, okay. So meals taxes.
We're, we don't estimate anything for the impact fee, because we know we weren't receiving much.
Challenge there, mhm.
Licenses and permits, that's, yeah, that's, I think, three accounts that we receive money for.
Sorry, Bradley, can you speak a little louder? Sorry.
Sorry about that.
License and permits?
Yeah, I'm saying license and permits. The three accounts, there's alcohol beverage licenses, other licenses, and then the building permits, those are the three accounts that flow into that one line, which I don't like. Probably should separate them out.
So, can you go back to the list screen for a second?
Yep.
So, Board of Health.
Board of Health.
Right, so, we're not going to get all those receipts.
44,000?
Right, because 75% of them are going to go into the revolving account? Not that I want you to lower our revenue, but we can't have it both ways.
Yeah. Yep. We'll note that. That would, that would reduce our departmental receipts.
Port fines, well.
Highlight it or something, see.
We can work on some speeding tickets, 4,000, that's, that's, there's people driving much faster than that in this town.
We have been receiving a lot in investments. We could bump that up, but it's.
But we don't know what the rates are going to be really past summer, so.
Kept everything similar. We added the.
I would, I would specu, I would speculate on the interest, whatever you collected for interest this year, I think 50% of that number is appropriate to budget. Because I don't think the rates are going to fall before October or November.
And the communications, that reflects putting in the, the reserve.
The middle of January.
And that was a holding pattern thing, right? That's for the futures expense on communications, right? For the dispatch?
Where is the, where's the 3% tax for cannabis?
That would be cannabis tax.
Not the community impact, oh, okay.
Cannabis tax.
So we're.
That's 72?
Yep.
Yeah, all right.
Following, the bottom ones are 17,500 from that WPAT loan from the article for the, the budget that we give to the town.
Right.
That was a $1,000 placeholder on the draft.
And do we, do we have a more current ambulance receipt money past January?
I could get that amount. I'm sure there is more than 200,000 in there.
Yeah. So that might bump up a little bit better.
And these are the temporary indirect costs for water and the transfer station. We're, we're working on the water one.
So the ambulance receipt thing, again, where, you know, our intent was to do it this year, but for next year is to put two full-time paramedics in there, and just say they're $65,000 a year without benefits, that's 140,000, the new layer in the benefits to go with it. I mean, we should be drawing at least that much from the ambulance receipts. You know, so I mean, I'd be comfortable going up to the 200,000.
Well, if you can get some more recent figures, I think you're going to need to just to get as accurate as we possibly can, because we don't need to nickel and dime it if we actually have a little bit of extra money in there. Yeah, okay. Right, so that's where you came up with that, okay?
The, the. Yeah. And I know I'm jumping back to expenses here, but I just remembered it. On the expense side, I think we're over-budgeted on vocational schools.
Oh, yeah? On expenses?
Roll-off in enrollment?
Well, it's just, last year's budget was 980, and they're going to 1, 2. So, so the number that's in there is the placeholder assuming 100% go.
Yeah.
It does not account for those that drop off.
Drop off.
So there's got to be.
Right.
A calculation. I think historically, the Select Board has funded at 90% of that number.
Right, we haven't funded 100% of those going out to voc, voc schools.
Right, and, and this budget right now has 100% in it, which is like a million, 1 million, 2.
And what's the, when, I know that you changed.
It's past April 1st, they had to commit.
When they had the, oh, when they had to commit?
No, no, when they had to sign up to say, I'm interested, so.
Right.
100% of those are in the budget.
They can back out.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. And we've often had, well, we've had, for a couple of years, we've had like one family or two, maybe, that come in late saying, oh, well, we kind of changed our mind, and we really want to go to Smith Oak now, or something like that, so we've had to make accommodations for that.
Right. But I would suggest there's at least 100, 150,000 surplus in that line item. So again, this 200 thing is shrinking, and mind you.
So which line is that referring to, John? That's the.
It's on the expenses, on the bottom of the budget.
Sorry.
Down by transferred.
Some of that Board of Health revenue too, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Should be towards the bottom, or wherever education is.
Education, yeah.
Right there.
Yep.
Yeah, they're at a million, 1.
Voc tuition? Uh, right about 3.
Don't look.
I'm going to get dizzy over here. Yeah, they're at a million, million, 1, million, 2.
How do I fix that? What's that?
Right about there.
Which one?
Voc tuition.
I think you're on it. It's a 92.47.
One cell, 170.
Vocational, 126.
126, or whatever that is.
And that should be adjusted?
Well, I, so that assumes 100%, I, I have the number, the calculation on, on one of my documents, but that assumes that everybody that applied is going, and does not adjust for the graduating seniors. So I think there are 15 seniors and 13 applications. So it's a net savings of 2 to start with, at 20,000 a pop.
Unless that already takes into account the people leaving.
No, well, not when I looked at it earlier. There's a new person doing the calculations, and they, they forgot to deduct the seniors. But maybe if we highlight it, and then I can see, if you remind me, I can see the details. Because the other thing I asked for from them is historically, how many apply, how many drop off, and what percentage of those actually end up going?
Right, yeah.
So that we could figure it out.
Mhm. All right, so with those, we maybe haven't made all those changes yet, but did that get us a little bit closer, or not yet?
Um, there's a few items, I mean, I think at the top of the list is chairs for the Select Board.
Yeah.
It may sound crazy, but we're spending like 48 hours a week in here.
Yeah.
Just for workers' comp and lower back sciatica. Something I would try to keep in, at least maybe upgrade it just for everybody, but.
How much should go up, 1,500?
Yeah, 6, 7 chairs at 100, 150 each, depending. Some of these I.
Donate 500. Who else is going to donate?
I think I put something in, this was on my wish list for the Select Board. I forget what my narrative said. It was something, I think I had something in there.
But the, so we adjusted the conservation wages with the ARPA. We also adjusted the, that's it. The, where is it?
While you're looking for that, Scott, are we, because I didn't see, we're assuming zero contribution from ARPA?
No, that finished, they, they've took out money.
On the entire budget.
Oh.
Because we didn't have a revenue source of ARPA money.
No, we didn't, yeah. So we think this is all they would need, that the ARPA they have right now will get them far enough that we only need to put in 10,000 to get through fiscal '25.
Roughly, it's like, you know, I just use whole numbers.
Yeah.
And then the planning board, you know, 5,000 could be used in their revolving fund.
Right.
Technology services was an increase.
Yeah.
That was the 10,000.
And again, that's the managed IT support.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I did just put in some placeholders for salaries.
Yeah.
Just, I'm just, you know, throwing it out there, it doesn't mean that we're, it's just literally 3%. So we still have to negotiate everything, but just to give you an idea of what a possible increase would be, both for the highway superintendent and the general highway wages. Reduced the health director by the 5,000-plus change, and then I made the, the changes to the contracted. One request that we did have that, I would like to talk to Michelle a little bit further, just to get the exact, what she could do, is some additional hours for her veterans' agent. She's at 6 hours right now, she's making a lot, really a lot of impact on the community. And when, you know, I was just working with her last week on one case, but, you know, one case with a veteran that's being evicted could take, you know, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 hours a week, just on that one case. And that would use up all of her allotted hours, so. And you might have seen the Veterans Coffee Hour.
Yeah.
So that's been really successful, so.
Some new initiatives there.
So I would just advocate, I'm just advocating for, for that myself. She did request it, but I'd have to sit down with her and get the actual amount. The transfer to the enterprise fund, so that is the total amount, that does include the monitoring costs, there's still some kind of gray area of how we can take the monitoring cost out of the, the amount that we pay for the enterprise fund for the transfer station, but to balance that, we're going to need a little under 32,000. So that includes the transfer station and the monitoring. The hope is that we can figure out a mechanism to take that out.
Yeah.
So with the decreases and the increases.
If they all carried through, maybe, or maybe not? 180?
180, yes, yep. 180, and then, how did I? So 180 is just the actual adjusted. And then the decreases would, minus 55, and the increases would be plus 24, 865. So the final recommendation would be, we have to close 149,000.
So are we, is this then not going to need to be the 200,000 you were recommending from?
Well, if you do the, the placeholder for the Collins Center.
Yeah.
So that would bring us probably close up to 2,000.
This isn't taking any of the vocational.
Right.
You didn't adjust it.
So what, the?
The vocational one?
The reduction of the vocational.
Budget.
Yeah, so maybe, just a note.
The reduction in the revenue for, for the health fees. Right, because we're, right now, we're taking 100% of it, unless it carried over from that other workbook.
No. We haven't adjusted the revenue number, so it's still.
Oh, that's right, so.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, not, not to keep expanding this Excel workbook here, but, you know, could we like make column I, proposed adjustments, right, so we don't lose H, what we started with? Well, so we don't lose G.
Some column that doesn't have notes in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, even reduction, increase, and then maybe insert whatever, I, J, and K, per column K, and show the math. Right, because then that will give you a total all the way down?
Bradley, I may.
Does that make sense?
You need.
Yeah, you're doing good. All right, so adjust, adjust it, because that column's going to be, become the proposed budget.
Okay.
And then you just got to do.
So that's assuming we can get enough information from the Collins to?
Well, no, I just mean all, like, you know, where we back this up, we put this in, we really only hit like 6 or 7 lines, but it's changing, which is all driving to the bottom.
Right.
And then if you make the changes on the revenue, you got your expenses, you insert the revenue, tie the two together, you know, because right now, I mean, at least from what I'm, I'm seeing, we're all doing our math in our head.
Yeah.
Right? And then, and then I go back to, can we have that last, Madam Chair, can you give us the last 30,000 available in ARPA? Will you release it, to release this number? And how much ARPA money have we got reimbursed from?
There is that much there, that's what, yeah, no, that's what.
Because there's another 100 that we're waiting to get reimbursed, and then we can deploy it again, but we're running up against, I mean, not right away, but the clock's coming.
And that's why the, the quarterly reports for ARPA are due, and so our next actual meeting at the end of April, real meeting, we should have the ARPA quarterly reports in from those that are still ongoing, to see how close everybody is to spending. But the, the big ones are, are water and highway that are out there with the water main, and then the, the match for that grant. So the, the match for the grant is the one that's got to come back in from Randall's culvert study.
Right.
And I think that will start to come in, I just don't know how fast, but, yeah, anything coming in, we've got to have before December, so we can re-obligate it, reprogram it. But.
Correct, but don't we have to put it in this budget to get it approved? Well, I guess not.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, I don't think, but, would be ideal, but I'm not sure we have to. Anyway, any other thoughts and questions? I don't, you know, we could be here all night, I'd rather not, you know, if you guys have enough clear direction to, to move forward and do another iteration, or any other comments or thoughts, I mean.
And, and the next one, is it possible to get both workbooks, revenue and expense? You know, at the, at the same time?
Have them link, link together there?
I don't know about Lincoln, but.
You can do that, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Did you have a sense of magnitude of the change in the voc tech tuition?
It's, it's probably five kids, so maybe 100,000.
Okay, good. And you're going to supply veteran for me?
I'm going to give what I have. I'll leave it to. I'll, I'll give what I have with my interpretation, and if, if others disagree with my interpretation, that's fine with me.
You won't hold your deck.
So I think probably, obviously, we're going to be running up against the deadline in terms of balancing this budget, and getting it all put into our warrant, and getting the warrant approved and posted and so forth. the warrant approved and posted and so forth. It feels like, at least on the Select Board side, we need to have another interim meeting. I don't know whether finance is going to be available or not. And you guys are off next week, right? For vacation time?
I will be in the Carolinas.
So, today's the 9th. I'm forgetting the day that Robert said we had to post the warrant. Was it the 24, maybe the 23rd is our last day?
Question is, does the Finance Committee have to approve the budget before the Select Board? Do we recommend the budget?
Per our bylaw, that's how it's supposed to work, yeah. But it hasn't been my process, or my understanding of the process that we've gone through in all my time on the Select Board. We haven't had a very, we've been short-staffed on finance for most of my time on Select Board, so it's, it's usually been that Select Board has kind of initiated it, but then brought in Select Board. But according to our bylaw.
Before the town meeting, we also wrote, as the Finance Committee.
Right.
To recommend the financial.
Right.
So, now we go through it one by one. And so, that's generally printed on the motions, whether the Finance Committee recommends.
Correct. Whether finance recommends or not recommends, so that, that becomes part of the warrant eventually, if you look at one of the last warrants. But, yeah, according to our bylaw, that's, I believe, how it's supposed to work in terms of the budgeting process, is that you all do a lot of those hearings and then recommend to Select Board what, what you're hearing, yeah. I think, I mean, I don't, Donna? I mean, you've been here longer than I have with it.
I'm a voter for my support. We're all going to agree on that.
Well, I mean, I guess we were just trying to kind of save time to.
Yeah, right.
And since the Select Board wanted to be involved, why, why, why could the Finance Committee put in all this time without input from the Select Board? And present something?
Yeah.
And then have other departments coming to you and saying, "Well, but we really need this," and then you changing what we did?
Sure.
Why, why do that?
Right.
Why not just?
Yeah. No, I think this makes more sense to have it kind of joint meetings. It saves, and it saves time for those that are presenting their budgets, too. They don't have to do it twice.
Right, and, and I think as the, the Finance Committee develops and becomes more robust, right, that we, one of the things that we look at is the existing bylaw. A, doesn't need to be changed, but if it doesn't need to be changed, how about we, you know, we start following it or tweak it as we go? I mean, I like the benefit of the joint sessions, right? But it, it seems.
Yeah. No, and I think that's, that's one of the ones that I know from the, the general bylaws, on the, on the bylaw advisory committee. The, the Finance Committee one is one that had come around and, as one to be looked at, and whether it needed any changes or not. So, I think if Francine hasn't reached out to you yet, she will, because I think there was a draft that had been done probably a couple of years ago, and then the Finance Committee kind of wasn't there to respond to it, so.
I think maybe I did get it, but we haven't really met.
Yeah, so whenever you guys have a meeting. But, I mean, that could be, you know, something to look at in terms of how the process can work better. Yeah, but, okay. So, what are we thinking in terms of meeting time here, Scott? I don't know, we've got a regular meeting on the 23rd, but I think we're going to need some level of interim one.
Yeah, I think, I think we can do both the warrant and the budget, probably have a, a special meeting.
Shall we aim for the 16th, a week from now?
That should give us enough time to.
Put a, put a placeholder down for the 16th, and.
You won't be here?
Yeah.
John won't be here, but if you have anything as a draft to get out enough ahead of time that maybe you can comment on before you go, or something, if you have thoughts about the school especially, I know. But shall we try again at the 6, 6:30 time? 6:30?
So, is that your, a regular Select Board meeting, or?
No, it would be a special one. This would be on the 16th, it would be a regular, not a regular one, just, just budget and warrant.
Okay, so, we'll post our meeting, too.
Okay, so, 6:30, okay, on the 16th?
I won't be able to make that.
No?
No, it's my birthday.
Okay.
Patriot's Day is 15th.
Say what? Patriot's Day is 16th, 15th, right. So, that's a holiday, so we can't do anything there. So, let's try 6:30 on the 16th, and if folks from, from Finance can join, that would be great.
I mean, if you promised not to keep it too long, I could zoom in.
Yeah, okay.
But not for a four-hour marathon.
No, no, no. We shouldn't, we shouldn't. If we're a four-hour meeting at that point in time, we're in real trouble, no.
Yeah, I would just, in the event that I can't, I can't zoom in, I mean, I'm, I'd have to say, I would be opposed to any move to utilize stabilization fund for the budget, just personally. I don't, I don't think we're there yet. That being said, I mean, if it came down to, we're only looking for, you know, 20 or 25,000, and I don't want to speak for everyone else, but I can bring it up tomorrow night, you know, the, that one-time extraordinary relief is still sitting at 75,000. We're going to use 25,000 over the next five years, so it's not an impact of whether we use it next year, that's fine, but it's understood that it's gone then. So, then a year down, kicking the can, you know, we're going to, Norris is going to look